There you go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. All right. Call the Saturday, February 3, 2024 budget meeting, budget workshop, I should say, to order, and we will do a roll call vote. Gates?
Yes.
Or Koski?
Yes.
Fenwick?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And a public comment to start. Seeing none online or in person, we will proceed. Am I turning it over to superintendent Burke?
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the fiscal '25 budget hearing. This is an exciting day for me, I think, for us, for Dr. Rabb here. I truly mean that because I think this is a large portion of the town's budget. And I think for the last four years, we're very proud of the fact of how we managed it. And today, we'd like to use these numbers to tell a story of what we value, how we approach the finances that we're requesting to our strategic plan, which was collaboratively developed last year and sets the town envision for the district. Before I get to that, I want to thank all of the folks in the room today. This budget is basically a year-round endeavor, starting in July, and with our department chairs and directors, going to teachers and our principals as well, working with our teachers to get their needs, their wants, their wish lists together, collating that, putting it in a prioritized order, and then our central office, department heads and cost center leaders get together. And we put it all together, we align that. And part of that philosophy is, it's not that you're just asking for money, and I want, you know, to keep reiterating that, it's, does this fit with our value system, does it fit with our strategic plan, and is it good for kids? And all the answers to that are yes. It goes along, and then we prioritize in this budget that you see today. I also want to say, over the last four years, that the budget has gotten increasingly more transparent, and I'll say this one is the most transparent to date. I think we've been blessed with two great business and finance directors, and Dr. Dutch setting the tone for that, and now Dr. Rabb, increasing that level of transparency and organization that you'll see today. And hopefully, it's a user-friendly document that the community can understand, as we'll be posting all these documents to our website for folks that couldn't make the meeting today. And if anybody has questions, we'd be happy to answer that. After this, the tour goes to Monday night, where we'll have the school committee hearing. We'll follow up on that. And then the following week, Dr. Rabb and I will be going before the select board and the finance committee to also present this budget. So we go through, it's a pretty thorough process, and we're happy to be here today. So thank you, everyone in the room. Look, we asked those, our directors, principals, department chairs, central office folks to be here today in case we have any in-depth questions that we want the person responsible for that cost center to come up and answer. So we do have access to those for the committee. This is the smallest budget increase in the four years since I've been here, so the belts had to be tightened. That being said, we are still providing a very strong budget, in my opinion. And I also want to share with the community that we often talk about test scores, MCAS scores, and compare ourselves to other towns. I'd like us to start doing that also with our finances, with a close to approximately $15 million budget. Start looking around and seeing what other towns are doing in, you know, in cuts and program cuts and loss and things like that. When we continue to, I think, use our money wisely and respectfully and continue to offer strong programming, but also continue to build on that. And we'll tell some of that story today. So again, something I'm very proud of. In fact, it reminds me of game day. I texted Tom, Dr. Rabb this morning, I said, "Game day." I don't know if you know what that meant or not, but, you know, when I was an athlete, I used to listen to AC/DC in the locker room and get fired up. And I found myself today on the way in to get fired up, listening to Rick Astley. So I've mellowed a little, but I'm still excited for this day because I think this is hugely important. So I'll start with the presentation. And school committee, we're going to pause quite often to allow you, because there's a lot of information to digest, to ask any questions. And if you have a question, you know, please feel free to just interject, we'll be happy to do so. And any questions we can answer today, we have the opportunity to come back Monday and have those ready for you. If we can start the presentation. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so just to remind the community, our budget reflects our priorities, and you spend money on what you value, very important. So these are our three strategic objectives from our strategic plan. And I'll break these down a little bit and talk about them as we go, so we can move to the next slide. So the first one, teaching, learning, and leading. So what I'm doing with these three is just talking about some enhancements. And again, in a tight budget season, we're able to enhance some things, so I wanted to highlight those. This also includes all the things that we've created in the last four years that we're still supporting, so no program or curriculum or anything has been cut. So these are enhancements. So the first one is, you know, obviously a big one with curriculum instruction and assessment. And I think what we're also part of is we put in processes and systems that strategically are looking at our curriculum, aligning money to those in a, you know, in a very, you know, strategized manner. So for example, last year, we focused on science. We talked about our textbooks and resources for our teachers and our professional development needing to be, you know, enhanced or attention paid to them. So here, this year, we're focusing on science, excuse me, math, last year, science, common resources for all instructors, which include textbooks and other resources. So giving teachers everything they need in this modern world to align with the math standards and what they need to teach. It also adds consistency for our instructors, so they're not all going and using their own individualized curriculum. We have it for them. And they're also working simultaneously on calibrating that curriculum vertically and horizontally with these purchases. So I think that's helped. And the training comes in, as we'll get to as well. We'll get to this as part of the story when we get to the numbers we're spending on each, but approximately, you know, close to $500,000 will go into this particular line with training and curriculum for math. So it's quite, quite an investment, and each year, we're focusing on a different course, subject, area. And the next bullet talks about, you know, what the benefits are of this, its sustaining curriculum over the long term, consistency, professional development to support that, and research-based curriculum to use for our students. And then the professional development, which we talked about, multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS, another big word in there is universal design for learning, which is all over our strategic plan. It's basically challenging and providing opportunities for all kids where they're at and moving them forward. And CAST is, and you'll see, there's a link there that's just for folks that want to check out a little bit of the training we use and what UDL is all about. So I think that's a good link for folks as a resource. And so that's some of the curriculum work. There's more, again, but those are some highlights of things that will be additional in this year's budget. The next one on our strategic outcomes in our strategic plan are communication and community partnerships. So every year, we spend time on, and it's always a goal to improve and not only increase but improve communication, and it's always going to be one because it's always something that you can get better at. And so we just gave some examples here of things that we, you know, included in our budget, like mass communication, sending something out. This is tied into maybe the last one, where folks get the app, they get a text message, they get a phone message, and that software costs money to invest in if you want to get the best. The website, obviously, is a commitment where we want that to be one-stop shop, and we want that to improve each year and get better. And then safety communication, which we found out recently is extremely important, and we're always looking to improve and revise that. So those are some areas of communication that we'll continue to look at, assess and revise, and then looking for our, starting the framework, and then into next year, having a real, actually an outline and communication plan that I can share with the committee that will help guide us with that work. The next one's collaboration with the town. We split the financial forecast committee here or the subcommittee. I want to thank Mr. Gates, Ms. Fenwick, for being liaisons on that committee. That's a, we're a lion's share of the work that we come to getting numbers from, working with the state, working with our town. Town administrator Jim Boudreau, town finance director Nancy Holt are extraordinary in their collaboration efforts to work with the schools. There's a few other folks in that committee, from the town side in, from the school side, including Dr. Rabb. And what I've found here is this is the most collaborative working group that I've ever been a part of. And again, if you look at other towns, there's a lot of back and forth about percentage point of, you know, money here, money here. And I just think we work together very well because we want what's best for our town and for our kids, and we want to be responsible. And just a subnote under that, there was a decision made this year where the school moved $166,000 over to the town to support the town with the need they had. And that certainly would be reciprocated if we were in that boat. So I just want to thank everyone that was part of that decision and know that we made a little sacrifice there for the greater good of the town. Next one is sustained partnerships. We have many. A lot of them are, I think, is the, what makes me proud about this budget is we do a lot of things, we try to get a lot of things that don't cost money. And these are some things that do, but I think are good investments. So the Mass Insights, you've heard this on many presentations, it really transformed our AP with support to our teachers and Marcus assessments for our students. And so we'll continue to use that to improve and to really help us. The Massachusetts Partnership for Health is more for the staff and our social, emotional, and other professional development, very convenient, user-friendly, a lot of wonderful resources. So again, links to both of those for folks that want to check those out. And we can give you more detail later in this presentation about how we use those, but they're really strong and they've been really helpful, so we'll continue that. Bridgewater State University is another big one, which doesn't cost us any money, but I wanted to just put that out there, that only a handful of schools have a partnership with Bridgewater State, and we're fortunate enough to be one of them, and they help with a whole host of things, from professional development to resources to student teachers, trainings, parent opportunities. So sky's the limit there with Bridgewater State as well. And finally, number three, finance facilities. There's some close to personnel and technology, there's a lot in this one. So there's been a lot of talk about our new school. And I think it ties nicely into this facilities bullet here because in the last four years, we, four years ago, I think, we created a line item that not many districts have or can afford, or chose to make a priority, which we have, $250,000, quarter million dollars that we commit to every year in maintaining our buildings, being responsible. So when we go out and ask for a new school, folks are going to trust that we need it because we've been putting the money in through our own operation budget. I want to thank the town also because a lot of improvements to our schools that are over certain costs have been supported through the capital process, like our two new roofs recently at Jenkins, at the high school. So again, great partnerships, again, support from our town and our community members. I want to thank all of them as well because these great things happen. But facilities, I wanted everyone to know that is a commitment in our operational budget. Water fountain breaks, you know, heating system goes down, you know, we don't run to the town for that, we take care of it on our own so that we can focus on the bigger ticket items for the town. And we also can say with confidence that, you know, we're not going to be coming to you every five or 10 years for new schools because we're taking care of the ones we have. So I really wanted to emphasize that, and that commitment stays, and that number could even go up. We have the capacity some years if we need to spend a little bit more, and we have the need, we might have to. The next one is the additional positions. And that's a little shocking because it's only approximately a 3% increase this year, where in the past, we've had 5% and 4%. But these are two small additions that can have a major impact on our needs. First one's a computer technician, 1.0. I think this ties into the communication I talked about, but also, you know, the needs of technology. We, for a school our district our size to have only four people in the, including the director position is really small. And plus, all the things we've added with the one-to-one, with the trainings we need, with also cybersecurity, with districts getting whacked with theft, so protections. And after we did our technology audit, we found there's a need for more staffing. So we'll, and I'd also like to expand some of these responsibilities to be part of our communications plan and how we communicate out through those different sources I mentioned earlier. So that's something we'll put there, and we'll get more details about how we'll use that when we share our plan later in the spring. And our district coordinator has been a 0.7 position, so this is a 0.3 increase. And, you know, what we found is the only real area that we don't have a department head or a director for is special education. And so things jump, and we do have team chairs, but things jump from team chair needs straight to central office. And there's, there's a big gap there where we want to get more action in the building, building level to add this to 0.3. So that 0.3 addition will be more administrative type of work in addition to the other district work. It's not just an add-on because I think the 0.7, we can handle that, the 0.3. And also, we have to keep in mind that state's moving to a new IEP next year, and there's going to be a lot of training needed, a lot of work to implement that. But just simple oversight of our, you know, assessment, quite honestly, of our special education programming will be enhanced with this small addition. So I think we can get a great bang for our buck with that. And then the last one, I put it up here as a self-funded position because I think there has been some confusion in the community over this position. It was started, you know, and I want to tell a little story here about responsible use of ESRA money. And I think what some districts did is they hired folks, permanent teachers or other staff members with ESRA. When it dried up, they found themselves in a bind of being able to support those folks when it, ESRA ended or is ending. And this is the position that we put in there because it was a position that we wanted to use to go and find grants and supports for our students with the understanding that the only way we moved over into the operational is if it was making its own money back in support of students. And I can say with great confidence and with the numbers that this has not only exceeded our expectations, it's really been a boom for us. So this director of supplemental services, I'm asking to move over to the operational budget. As you can see there, and I went back two years just to show it's not a one-year fad. And I want to thank Donna Moffett and Julie Ward for all the hard work they've done. In over two years, we've, we're, and we're only a year and a half, really, we're only halfway through this year. Taking out their salaries, we're in the black right now, almost $200,000 in counting. So I looked at the numbers, it's, it's over, over those two years, it's been over $400,000 in grants. And then I just put a couple up there that, A, we may, if we didn't have this position, these are things we just wouldn't have, maybe one or two of them because not, we don't have a lot of time to go and, we don't have a grant writer. But also, this, this position follows up on these grants to make sure that they're being implemented, that we actually need them, that they align with our strategic plan, they align with our curriculum, and there's a lot to it. So the SCL curriculum for two years was a $126,000 grant, and then there was another in the acceleration academies that many folks have seen probably, especially with our elementaries, with our work on that, that's already up to $245,570. And this not only goes through the school year, but goes through the summer. So we're able to help enhance kids' learning and support kids throughout the summer. So these are, I think, some smart decisions we've made that are supported with the numbers, but also, again, something that, you know, close to, you know, over $400,000 worth of additional supports and for our kids, or enhancements, I should say, is something that I'd like to continue to support.
Not specifically budget numbers related, but for the computer technician and the other district coordinator positions, could we see at some point, maybe it's a future school committee meeting, sort of some kind of, almost like a tree, I just wanted to see what that person's, that job responsibilities are and encompass for both, and as you mentioned, sort of that comprehensive sort of special education. I, I feel like I need to, at this point, have a better picture of what the sort of chain of commands or the tree of that looks like and who's responsible for what.
Absolutely.
Particularly, well, both, actually. I was going to say particularly sped, but both.
Yeah, no problem. I think that would, great. Okay, excellent. And now we're going to turn it over to Dr. Rabb to start getting into the detailed numbers of our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Burkehead. I'm real excited to be here. One of the most exciting things working in Situate is that we have a great collaborative relationship with the town. And the financial forecast committee meets several times and looks at all the revenue opportunities that the town has. And we develop the budget based on the revenue and the expected revenue coming into the town, both from our Chapter 70 revenue as well as the town revenue. And we get together, and you can see over time that we put together how much funding is going to be available to the entire town, both the town and the schools. And so you'll see this year, we have $70 million available moving into FY '25. And traditionally, here in Situate, it's been a two-thirds, one-third split. So the schools have required two-thirds, and the town has required one-third. And that has been, over time, a very workable number. As Mr. Burkehead said earlier, we did make a small adjustment this year, and so we're doing 66 and a third percent, and the town's doing 33 and two-thirds percent for FY '25. And that allowed the town an additional $166,000 to support their needs. So at the end of the day, this budget was built upon a town share of $46.9 million to the schools. If you flip to the next slide, you'll see that when we talk about revenue, we take an all-funds approach to putting the schools together, to put the school budget together. So it's not only the $46.9 million, but an additional $4 million in grants and revolving. Taken together, that $51 million is the total amount of funds that we have to build the FY '25 budget. And you can see on the top half of that chart, we, I've committed to state and federal grants. These are grants that we receive every year, they're entitlement grants, they're, they're safe, we're going to get them every year. Title I, we use for math instruction at the middle school, Title IIA and Title IV, our professional development. IDEA supports our other district tuitions and our special education transportation. The early childhood grant supports our early childhood program. Medco supports Medco, and circuit breakers supports our other district students. So taken together, that's $3.2 million above and beyond what the town contribution is. And we incorporate all of that into our budget. Similarly, with our revolving accounts, we do raise funds for students who attend the IXL program here at the high school who are from other district. And you can see in FY '23, we raised $344,000. Originally, that was budgeted at 175. I corrected it to 225, but I tend to be very conservative with these numbers because you never know from year to year exactly what they're going to be. And since we do rely on it, I want to make sure that we have enough to support our program. Early childhood receipts are consistent, and so $140,000 is expected for our early childhood preschool program. Again, our bus fees are very consistent, sports events receipts, we've done very well this year with tournament games and so forth, and we'll talk a little bit more about athletics later. And our bus lease, our bus lease is $250,000 on this line. That actually increased with the new lease. We're in year one of five, and it's $304,000. It is supported by the town and by the money that we get from the bus fees, and I'll show you that later on. So all in, we have $51 million to build this budget. And so as you look at all the expenses we're going to be talking about in a few minutes, they all total to that $51 million. And then we figure out exactly what goes in the operating budget and what goes on the grants as we develop it. Before we talk about the expenses, I wanted to just take, no, keep going, thank you. I wanted to take a moment and just talk a little bit about enrollment because I know there've been a lot of discussions in the community about our enrollment. And when we look at enrollment projections and we look at our enrollment, I know there seems to be a conversation about our enrollment going down. And while, if you look at last year, '22, '23, you see our enrollment was 2755. On October 1st, in '23, '24, our enrollment was 2745. If you flip to the next slide, I actually took a look on February 1st, we're up 31 students since October 1st. All right, we didn't flinch. All right, so we're, we're there, and we're getting there. Now, that's primarily kindergarten and preschool, a few more students at the middle school, but it is spread out. And I, I just wanted to be clear that our enrollment fluctuates. It's not a static number. You can't look over five or 10 years. Every day, we're taking kids in, we have kids coming out. But right now, we're up 31 students, and we have not corrected or added any staff to accommodate for those. We've incorporated those into the buildings successfully. So I, I think that's an important thing to understand, that it's easy to look at the October 1 number, but that's not always tells the whole tale. You need to look at what we're currently dealing with.
Sure. Sorry, is the October 1 number an actual number, or was it the estimated enrollment?
No, it was the actual number at that time.
So you're saying that from October 1st, actuals, the current actuals, we're up by 31 students?
Correct. District-wide, district-wide. And a, and a big chunk of those is at the preschool level, we're seeing a lot of students coming into our preschool, but it is spread out throughout the whole district.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Well, I, I was actually surprised when I saw that number earlier in the week. I, I knew we were up a bit, just anecdotally, but when we actually looked at the numbers, it's true, we're seeing that increase. If you go to the next slide.
Are you seeing at the priest, at the preschool level, is it for
I can see it.
Students in IEP that are coming, that are being accepted in the program, or is it, do we know that level of detail, is it students without IEPs that are coming in or from, from early intervention?
That I don't know off the top of my head. Mrs. Reardon might be able to answer that.
Yeah, can you hear me, or do I?
Yes. Good.
No, just that.
Good morning.
It was very unexpected. Good morning.
Yeah, so the nature, right, of the ECC program is students can start when they're three. So you're right, some of that does come from early intervention. So when kids are 2.9 years old, we can evaluate them, they qualify, they can start on their third birthday. So some of it is that. The other thing is, is we did have some peer openings still, so we've, we've been accepting even peer models on the day they turn three. So it's been a little different this year. In past years, we've been full with our peer models as soon as we start the year. This year, we didn't, that wasn't the case. We had some flexibility, so we've been adding peers. And we've also lost, a couple have also come out, and then new ones have come in. So, so it is sort of partly the nature of the program.
Great, thank you. So again, not to, to beat a horse, but just to look at the projected enrollment. NESTECAN is, is an organization that helps us predict enrollment out for the next 10 years. And you can see here, just looking at the trend line, I know the numbers are a little bit small, not including preschool, which is what we were just talking about, they don't include preschool in their enrollment projections. You can see that our enrollment is climbing slowly and then leveling off five or six years from now, and that's what we're seeing. So the enrollment projections actually are aligned with what we're seeing right now, people coming in. As a matter of fact, we're, we're probably seeing more students than the enrollment projections would suggest.
That's interesting, too, you mention that because then when you look, you dial it down to the, of course, per people spending, it's ever-changing, if the numbers are ever-changing, so I could input that.
Absolutely.
And, well, that's a decent change, too, so it's interesting.
So we take a look at salaries and expenses. So all the numbers that we're about to see are all going to total to that $51 million all-funds approach. So a couple of, and the way I typically do budget presentations is I start at 60,000 feet, I go down to 50,000 feet, 40,000 feet, 30,000 feet, and kind of start and get more and more granular as we go through the presentation. So if we go to the next slide, you can see, you know, again, this is more of a curiosity, but I think it's important to understand that our money goes to our schools. And for me, that's what this slide says, right? Our money here goes to our schools, that's where it belongs, and the bulk of our budget is in the schools, and that's where it needs to be. If you go to the next slide, salaries versus expenses, we're 80/20 salaries versus expenses, which is again where I'd expect to be in a, in a school district this size. We are all people, we have about 500 staff, and that's what we expect to have to, to run a district this size. Our OOD number at 6% is appropriate. We're, next year, we're going to have about 29, 30 students out of district versus about 1% of our overall district enrollment. And again, that is what the state says is kind of the expected enrollment. So I'm, I'm very happy that we're in that range. And to have our expenses above and beyond that at around $7 million is perfectly appropriate. And one last pie chart, if you look at the breakdown again between regular education and special education, our student percentage of students on special needs is about 70% of students, but it takes about a quarter of the budget in order to maintain that program. And again, in a district this size, these numbers did not surprise me at all, to be about one quarter, three quarters special and regular. Um to be about one quarter, three quarters special and regular ed is what I expected to see, and we can support the program based on that.
Um can I ask a quick question?
So, of course.
Sit down now, I was just about to.
Oh, there you go. So I I know you're an expert in this. I'm not. Um and so when you say things like, it's perfectly appropriate, this is what I would expect, these are the ratios, just for folks who are listening and maybe watch the recording. Is there, are you getting your, where is that coming from? Like, to what are you comparing that? Like, is there a standard that the state is setting? Is that sort of normal budgetary? Just just general question?
It's both. So the first thing, the state, the expectation is particularly with added district. The expectation is always about one percent of your students. So if you have twenty seven hundred students, you'd expect twenty seven, twenty eight students to be added district. So that's kind of a metric that people use. In terms of, you know, the split between regular education and special education, uh that's just more my experience. And and really having been in two or three different districts and in one district similar in size to Situate, and we had similar kinds of numbers. And so it's a little bit anecdotal in the sense that I I understand what it takes to support the program. And I guess I would put it in terms of, if I had seen it much different than this, I'd wonder why. And so when I saw this, I was like, okay, that's where it should be.
Right, thank you.
And go to the next slide. So getting more and more granular. And our elementary principals don't volunteer. I just, I haven't put down their salaries because we have made a commitment not to put individuals. But it all does add up. Um so again, if we look, I tried to, and this is a very similar slide from last year. Um Dr. Duch did a wonderful job with transparency and really showing the committee how these numbers work in an overall budget. I tried to mirror his slides, but also make them look a little bit different, just so they'd match kind of the way I kind of do things. So again, if we look at general education, that's all of our regular classroom teachers, reading specialists, math specialists. Um special education teachers, our paraprofessionals, um overall, we have an over two million dollars of our budget goes toward our paraprofessionals. Which is a real commitment to to the program, to those people. Our custodians, our secretaries, our administrative staff, and then we're going to talk a little bit later about supplies. You'll see overall, the supply budgets in the buildings have gone up, and as we look at the granular detail, you'll see why. Um primarily, it's a commitment to the buildings that already already exist. Mr. Burke had earlier talked about our new building project and pushing an athlete project. We have made a commitment to make sure that the high school can stay current, Jenkins and Wampata can stay current. And so a lot of the supply money that we have in our current budget is going toward those buildings to keep them up and running. Um if you look at special education, one of the little changes that I made is the OT, the PT, the speech, and the BCPAs. Those were kind of sprinkled throughout the budget. I put them in one place, so you'll see some changes later on that might look a little dramatic, but they're really not. It's just moving people from one place to another. Because they work in all of the buildings, and it was frankly just easier for me to keep tracking them there, so I just put them there. Um transportation for special education has gone up, five hundred and fifty five thousand is higher than it has been in the past. Um our transportation provider for special education struggles to meet all of our needs, and so we do have to go out to contracted services, and that is admittedly expensive. Um our added district at three point five million, um last year was budgeted three point four million. I put it a little bit higher, not because of the expenses or anything, but just to provide for unanticipated expenses. We always have situations where a student can come in, and these can be two hundred and fifty thousand dollar unanticipated expenses when you're dealing with added district. Tuitions and the transportation that's attached to it. And one of the most difficult parts of putting a school budget together is added district, because those swings can be so large. And so we want to make sure that we're protected for that, and we want to make sure that we have what we need to cover those students. Those are our neediest students. Um and then secretaries to support special education and the administration. So if we go on to the next slide, more expenses and salaries summarized all the way down to the fifty one million. So again, we look at the central office staff, and we look at the supplies there for custodial, electric, gas, and contracted services. That's pretty consistent with last year, that three point four million. Um curriculum is up by about fifty thousand dollars. It was around four twenty last year, it's four seventy this year. That's primarily to support the new math curriculum, which we'll talk about a little bit later on. Um our department chairs are put together in one salary. Athletics, I broke it out a little bit differently. The numbers haven't changed too much. Athletics is up about sixty thousand dollars um from one year to the next. But I just broke it out so that people could see our commitment to our coaches, um officials and event staff, refs, everybody that we need to run the games. Um fees dues and subscriptions, we do pay to be part of the MIAA. Our ice hockey rental, girls and boys, it doesn't matter, that ice has gotten much more expensive, and so we had to increase our rental fees. And then just the regular awards and supplies and equipment. And transportation, we primarily provide our own transportation for athletic events. Our own buses and bus drivers will do that. But occasionally, we do have to go out for contracted services for transportation, and so I wanted to make sure there were funds available for that. Uh technology, those salaries include the new technician we were talking about earlier. And then service and supplies for technology is also up a bit from last year, and we'll look at some of those details in a moment. Um the ECC staff hasn't changed. That's the same number of FTEs as last year. Um and and lastly, to transportation, again, transportation, we do supply our own transportation here, which, to be perfectly honest, has kept those numbers pretty flat from one year to the next, which is fantastic. And the combination of our budget commitment as well as the revenue from the bus fees has kept those numbers pretty flat from one year to the next. So that's how we put together the whole fifty one million dollar budget. And then um if we go to the next slide.
Can I ask a question before we go?
Of course, sure. I just tend to plow along. I apologize.
That's okay. No, 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 it's fine. So when you were describing, I think whatever, so I want to check in, when you described the supplies, you described them as sort of the money that we need to keep up the buildings, you know? Um so can you tell me, how is that different than this maintenance line that we now have in the budget?
Sure. So the supplies are things that we need to buy every year, no matter what.
Okay.
So whether it's paper towels, cleaning supplies, things that we need to know, um we need to buy, you know, cleaner for the floor, we need to make sure that we have all of those kinds of things. Um the maintenance line, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and and it's also to fix some things that just break. So if a pipe breaks or a valve breaks or something else. It's the maintenance line, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, also to kind of make sure things are up and running as well, to keep moving us forward. So for example, and this is a simple example, and Mr. Katalin would probably give a better description than this. Um but this year, we had a couple of the valves here at the high school break that just had work and make the heating system work. Um instead of just doing the one simple repair, we were able to look ahead and maybe repair four, five, or six, and get more done than we would normally get. So it lets us stay on top of things.
Okay. One other question around the transportation. So we have a separate item for athletics and then one for the buses. Is there, are they separate just so you can keep track because it's too different, or are they, is there any overlap in those, given that we have our own, yeah?
There is. I separated financially, but in reality, it's an overlap.
Okay, okay.
It's the same people.
Got it. That's what I was asking. Okay.
So if we go, I'm going to invite um Mr. Payne, the athletic director, to come up. Unfortunately, he does have another commitment this morning, so he's got to run and coach boys, boys hockey. So he's gonna, he's gonna run in a little while, but so I just put athletics up first, just so that we can discuss it. Uh again, athletics budget, we have, as everybody here knows, a very strong athletic program. Our students make it to the tournament. They make it to tournaments every season. And so we have to budget our athletic program robustly to make sure that we can support the whole program. And so these are all of our athletes, um making sure that we have a coaching staff that's appropriate, making sure that we have the supplies for them. Making sure that we're current in all of our memberships, because to qualify for the tournaments and be part of the tournaments, we have to be current, and I mentioned the increased ice rental fee. And the contracted services, it really didn't go down. I just kind of moved it into athletics and membership. That was more of a budgetary adjustment as far as I'm concerned. But it allowed all of the different things that we have to do. And then, like I said, I separated out transportation simply because I wanted to be explicit. You know, we have salaries for transportation for regular ed buses every day. While it's the same people who are driving for us, it still costs more in the afternoon to bring them back. So I just wanted to show that athletics has that that transportation. So um again, and to your earlier question, uh is nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars what you'd expect to see in a district this size? But yes, very much so, and with the level of competition that our students do. Uh recently, this question's come up, so I'm just going to address it in terms of fundraising and some of the tournaments that our kids do. We're committed to all of the MIAA tournaments. So you hear about us making the tournament at the end of every season. Our athletic budget incorporates all of that tournament play. But occasionally, teams like recently, the cheerleaders were here last week, um they get to national competitions. And unfortunately, that does require some fundraising. We can't support all of those things with kids, whether it's a sports or whether it's, you know, DECA going to states or nationals. Or something like that. But what we have done is we put funds in the athletic budget. I've also, and we'll talk about it later, I've put it in the building expense budgets to provide funds for families who can't afford to go. So we're never going to let money get in the way of a student who cannot go, and we expect all of our teams to fundraise when they have to. Um or support any extracurricular activity or fundraise when it has to. But in the budget itself, I embedded twelve thousand dollars for scholarships for those students if we needed to. And in the athletic budget, we budget um as if every team was going to make the tournament, so they know always. And so that allows us a little bit of wiggle to help out any family that needs help. So I'm thrilled with all of the success that our students are seeing across the board, and we want to support that. Um and we do the best we can to make sure that we can support that. But fundraising, unfortunately, we do have to allow for it. They can't, we can't support all of it. So Mr. Payne, I didn't want to invite you up here and not give you a chance to speak, so if you wanted to say a few words about athletics, where we're at.
Yes, I I really just want to say thank you to everybody for the support that um the athletic department is giving here in this district. It is truly amazing. As you know, I've worked in a couple of the districts, and the the support from the community and the school community administration um for athletics is second to none here, no question about it. So I I appreciate that very much, and I know the students do as well. And I also wanted to say that um, you know, we did start Unified Track last year, and we will have our first unified basketball game on Tuesday, February twenty seventh. Um Abington's going to come over, and we're going to play, and I'm hoping within that timeframe of our basketball season kind of winding down. In the about three weeks or so we have prior to spring sports starting, we can get three or four basketball games in there before we transition to Unified Track. And then I'm working on, our fall schedules are all done, so I'm working on establishing like a six to eight game unified soccer season for the fall. So those things are the work too, and that's that's the real fun part of the job when you when you get to do the things like that for us and the other students. Any questions?
Um I have a question. I think it's related to this. Um just curious, is, do we, I think I asked a couple of years ago too. Um I'm not sure if appropriate now, but. Relative to transportation, are there rules about when we need to transport students and when we don't? Um I know that obviously transportation is expensive. I'm thinking mostly, again, probably it all comes down to hockey because nothing's here on campus. So I'm just curious what the policy are or is about relative to taking transportation, school provides transportation to practices and or games and or getting students there. Getting themselves there. I'm just curious of what that policy is, if there is one, just to make sure they're on board.
So so um you're right, primarily, it does, it's the winter sports primarily, um we have the issues because so many um sports take place offsite. Skiing goes to Blue Hills, they drive themselves to Blue Hills. Um hockey drives themselves to pretty much Hallamock, the Bog, Rockland Rink, and Davis, and Hillbrook. Um they're all considered, we we don't have a home rink, so they're all considered kind of like our home rinks.
Okay.
So.
So is that kind of like the umbrella, like if you have a home practice slash home game?
Correct.
Then you don't have to provide transportation regardless of where it is theoretically?
Correct.
Is that kind of what, okay.
So I know in the past, Situate did provide transportation to practices when uh for, I know it was boys, I'm not sure of girls too. When they used to practice in the morning, they used to meet here at three thirty in the morning for a five a.m. practice.
You know, I I was just curious if the po, make sure that we were following the policy. I know it's it's a it's a hassle, first of all, because I'm supposed to be somewhere, then you have to go, and it takes extra time. So I want to make sure we were following the policy. Obviously, it's an expense as well. So I just want to make sure we're following the policy, and I'm assuming that we were. Just want to make sure of that. But it does make it easier for, I think, slightly easier for most families to just drive, but it's more like the younger, like, if you have a freshman, how am I going to get to the?
Right there.
Speed now or wherever if they don't drive, right? So just want to make sure we're following the policy, that's all.
With the hockey ice, it's the one sport, my kids don't play, so I don't live in hockey world. Uh but so in that line item there with the athletics memberships, that's the the increase is solely due to the the increase in uh the fees for rink.
The rental expenses have gone through the roof.
I remember that from last year's budget, and that now again, so is, you got, is there any context that, I mean, I'm assuming all districts are feeling that?
So the 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 issue is there aren't enough rinks in the area, so that that creates the first problem. So it's a supply and demand. To play a game now, uh realistically is fourteen hundred dollars.
Wow.
The ice time official scorekeeper. It's very, very expensive. Practice ice next year will be six hundred dollars for fifty minutes.
Wow. I would imagine that's, I mean, not, you know, some budgets might not allow for that. Our towns not even have teams, or that we're heading in that direction for some.
So I think there's a lot more pressure being put on booster groups.
Wow.
I mean, our booster group pays for a decent amount of ice.
Yeah.
Honestly, the the girls being in a co-op, that's going to help.
Yeah.
Because the ice expenses can be split.
All right, so would this be split or is this just our share?
This is our share.
That's our share.
We're getting revenue above, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Let's get that rink built.
I knew that was next.
At the new school.
Right, right at the top of the hill, right here, overlooking these beautiful fields. It's time for you to leave now.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you.
As Dr. Rab's transitioning, thank you, Doug. Uh Mr. Payne, um I just wanted to reiterate, and I think you might get back to this, but I want to thank the committee because uh. When we've had the field trip requests for out of state, obviously, the first thing I always mind is the fundraising, and it puts, you have fundraising fatigue for community. Same kids and the families, so, you know, we try to avoid that at all costs, so um we we did hear what you said, and we added a line item and therefore. For those kids, there's no pressure on, and we know that we'll be able to support them and be able to do all the great things we have now without, uh you know, worrying about certain kids. Or for the other kids having to raise excess amount to support other students. We have money built in now in our budget for athletics and for general field trips to um address those needs, so thank you for that input.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. So if we go to the next slide, these are all going to start looking very, very familiar and and very much the same. So there's different ways to break down a budget. I started to do it through the buildings, and so that we could look at the individual building budgets. And this is a similar slide to last year, um but I looked at all four elementary schools, and I start with the four elementary schools, and it's very, very consistent. Um first, we look at the FTEs. I went back to twenty twenty three. Uh different people have different ways of counting FTEs. And so I really took a real deep dive into it. Um I think the principal's got a little tired of me calling him and asking him, how many people do we have? And is this power there? Is that power there? Is this person there? But I really wanted to make sure that I understood the stats and that I understood exactly where everybody was. Uh particularly in music, I wanted to make sure that I understood where people were. So some of the FTEs are adjustments more than changes, and you go into FY twenty four. And I wanted to be crystal clear that we're very, very consistent from twenty four to twenty five. When we only have a three point two percent increase to the budget, we need to make sure that we're maximizing every dollar. Um I'm thrilled to see here we have commitments to reading specialists in the buildings, math specialist in the buildings, counseling in the buildings, psychologists in the buildings. All of those commitments are already built in to our elementary budgets, and it's fantastic that we're able to sustain them. We've been able to sustain average elementary class size of around nineteen. That doesn't mean there isn't an occasional class over that, or certainly classes under that. Um but our elementary class sizes will maintain it around nineteen. And the one area that we watch every year is kindergarten enrollment, because that's the unpredictable one. And so um I do have funding built in there should we need to expand by one elementary class. Um not a cushion, but there's funding built into the budget, so if we do need to expand um one element. So if we do need to expand one elementary kindergarten class, we can. So that funding is already there. We just need to watch the enrollment carefully and make sure that we're accommodating our kindergarten program. Again, there isn't much to say on this slide, I think, other than the consistency. And for me, again, coming in somebody new and coming in from another district, seeing the commitment and the equity between the four elementary schools is something that I really appreciated. And it's something that I think is highlighted here when you look from one to the next. So if there's no questions on the salaries, I'd love to spend a little more time on the expenses.
I just had a quick question. I think it's mostly just needing a reminder, so my apologies. So in terms of FTE, the music teacher I see is like 1.2 or the art teacher is 0.8. Can, can you just give some context to those numbers?
Sure. So the specialist, and I don't know, forgive me off the top of my head, how many times each elementary student goes to art. But it's based on the ones, okay. So it's based on the number of times that they go to art, times the number of sections that are in the building. So that's the consistency. So depending on the size of the building, art might be 0.8 or might be 1.0, depending on what the needs are. It's just making sure that each elementary section gets to go to art once. With music, it's a little bit more complicated, as I found out, because not only do we have the regular music classes, but we also have in fourth and fifth grade, students can take instruments for band. And so when you see a, for music, just trying to find it there, you know, 1.3 FTEs, that might be a combination of four or five people that are going one day a week for band, one day a week for music. And so Mr. Thomas is masterful at making sure that our seven rate music teachers are spread around the district the way they need to be. And one of the things that, that he was able to do was provide me a day-to-day schedule of exactly who's where. And then I was able to divide that up among the six buildings, so we know exactly who's where and can assign those FTEs appropriately.
Got it. This, this may be a like future or school committee meeting, but I would love to hear more. And this is, the context for me is I now have a, a student at the middle school who is so happy that he gets to have art so many days a week. And so just curious, you know, from our elementary school leaders and staff, the thought process around having 0.8 for an art teacher versus offering it more and how does that align or not with what they're trying to do with our, our students? So maybe it's a conversation. And I think, I think I'm saying that because we just talked about this tremendous investment that we make in athletics. And so I just wanna sort of think about where, what the parity is around that, so.
Thank you very much for that. Rather than putting them on the spot, let me speak to them and come back with a, a
Yeah, I'm not asking you to put it on the spot right now. I think it's a future, just like a put a pin in it kind of thing.
Thank you.
And I, I just wanna agree with Ms. Markowski on that too. I think, I do think that we have some work to do in terms of analyzing some of the elementary level art, music, elementary schedule in general, one of my pet peeves overall. But just, I, STEM, like all the things, how it fits together equitably and how we're preparing kids for all the opportunities mentioned in middle school and high school. Is this, so am I reading this correctly? So 2023, we had a 1.0 for art at Cushing and now it's 0.8? Or and it's divided up differently in most of our schools?
It's, it's made sure, so when I was looking at 2023, I was trying to figure out exactly, and again, it's more of a change in how we count people.
Right.
Than its reality. I know that sounds strange, but it's more, and I don't know off the top of my head exactly if there was a change in the number of sections. I think the commitment is to one art.
Gotcha.
Per, per section, one art class per section at the elementary level.
I just think this is an example of being more, it's very specific. So last year, the way Dr. Dutch handled it was, okay, we have, let's say, four, we'll put a one, whole numbers basically, but it wasn't really.
Yeah.
Tom, like I said, is really specific. So he wants to show 1.3, or we could have, you know. So I think that's the difference you'll see here. We're really getting into the weeds on exactly how much time they're spending at school.
Right, okay. Just wanted to clarify, so we're not, not decreasing art.
No. Just to read a more, a more specific, fair and apparent showing of where, where the teachers are.
That makes sense.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we didn't change any number of staff or the amount of time. It was just repositioned more this way for me moving forward into 26 and 27, the points of comparison will be a little bit greater.
Perfect.
If we go to the next slide, when we talk about expenses, we can use Cushing as an example, but all the schools are set up the same way. So Mrs. Riscle works very closely with the department heads in these expenses. And they took a deep, deep dive into their expenses from last year. So there is a very comprehensive spreadsheet that they look at. They looked at each individual line item for their expenses in every subject area. And I gotta tell you, I was very, very impressed by the level of granularity that they showed me. It wasn't just, well, because we got $2,000 last year, we're gonna keep it to $2,000 this year. They really took a deep dive. And they said in many cases, you know, hey, we did well this year in FY24. I don't necessarily need as much as I had in the prior year, so let me allow that for something else like a math curriculum, you know? So if, if science this year, the money was focused on the science curriculum in 24. And so next year, the money will be focused on the math curriculum. I was very, very impressed with the level of detail that they took into this and making sure that they meet the needs. One of the things that I added this year was a notes column. And that was to provide the community and the committee an opportunity to see exactly how some of these dollars are being spent and the reason for some of the fluctuation. The fluctuation is primarily because of our commitment to the math curriculum in 25. We wanted to make sure we were providing that $20 to, to have the new math curriculum. You'll also notice toward the top, and I certainly am not gonna go through every one of these lines, but you'll notice at the top, $2,000 for building administration field trips. That same $2,000 is in each of the six buildings for a total of $12,000 available to provide scholarships for students who cannot afford whole class field trips. So, you know, if the whole class is going down from this plantation and for some reason the student can't fund it. And I know our, our PTOs do a great job helping out with that as well. But this is a budget commitment to also make sure that our students get where they need to be. I've also increased the building supply and the building equipment lines at, not necessarily at Cushing, but at Jenkins, at Wampatuck and here at the high school and at the middle school. The middle school is a brand new building. It's a beautiful building, but it's been open for five or six years now. And there are needs. There are needs for equipment, things break, new tables and chairs. And we wanna make sure that things stay clean and current. So there is a commitment in this budget toward equipment and supplies for the buildings that are not part of the building project. And I think that was important because as you, you know, you walk around any building, chairs break, desks break. It's not enrollment-driven decision. It's more of a making sure that when students come into class, everything's working and they have what they need for chairs and desks and tables and so forth. So you'll see those increases throughout this budget. The other area that you'll see a little bit of an increase is in music supply all the way around through the budget, again, for replacement instruments and making sure that we have what we need. I know that families buy instruments normally, but for some of the bigger ones, they can be expensive. And if students wanna try something new or we just need to repair it, those expenses can rack up quickly. And so we embedded money throughout there to make sure that we were committed to our, our music students from that perspective. So go ahead, Chuck.
Thank you. I, I just wanna thank Dr. Rab for the notes column. I think that is extremely helpful for all of us. It also helps us internally to look, you know, principal department chairs to look at other schools and things like that. But I also think it's gonna be very helpful to the community who reads this and may not be in education to just kinda see in lenient terms on exactly. So I think the, when I mentioned earlier, this is probably the most transparent budget I've ever seen because of the notes section, addition to all the other things that we've done, but this is an addition this year. So thank you for that. I hope it's helpful. But I think these are based on questions we receive, but also articulating why numbers may look differently and just, again, to be upfront with folks and where, and why we're spending our money, so. Thank you for that.
Dr. Rab, I want, I wanna thank you for hearing our comments about these field trips. I appreciate that there's money set aside. Do you have the ability to move that money if, say, I'm thinking about the middle school and high school, some of those trips are more expensive? So that if the elementary school didn't use them, the students in the middle school could apply or something? Yeah, okay. Great.
So if, if we move on to Hattley, again, I don't have a whole lot to say about the individual salary budgets at each of the elementary schools because it's consistent. We're in a position here where our enrollment, even though it did go up 31 students from October, it is consistent from year to year. So short of looking at kindergarten enrollment, we're not looking to add a grade level teacher. There are situations where, and it's not explicit here, but it's baked in where, you know, we might need, I think at Hattley and, and Mrs. Sheen, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are moving a fifth grade section to a first grade or something like that. So, you know, where the enrollment spikes happen within an elementary school, we can make those changes. It's not a problem, but it's still saying an 11 FTEs at the elementary. But there are situations in each elementary school where somebody might move from one grade level to the next. And that's always at a principal's prerogative from one year to the next. The other thing that I made explicit in this is our commitment to BLL students. We don't have too many here in Central. We have very few BLL students. But the teacher that does it does spend a day in each of the elementary buildings. And so I just wanted to make that explicit, that I think in last year's budget, I think for budgetary purposes, it was all put in one elementary school, which is fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But I think it makes it a little more explicit to show that the person does travel from building to building and that there are needs in all the elementary schools. The students are all, not only in one place. So I'm happy to answer questions, but it's a very similar story to Cushing. And you'll see the elementaries are all pretty much the same in terms of how the staff have been just, similarly with Hattley expenses. Again, you'll see that there was a modest increase at Hattley. We're very aggressively looking toward the new school. So we're putting our money, as we've talked about over and over again, we're putting the funds that we do have toward the schools that are gonna be remaining. And so we've maintained Hattley, students are in a wonderful education, but we're not increasing the equipment lines or the supply lines there as aggressively as we are in the other schools. And you'll see that in the moment. Sure.
Just wanted to reinforce, you know, this example, this very specific example of, and appreciate the, the, the team at Hattley and Cushing for, you know, enduring some of this stuff where we're not putting money. But the question is often asked for with the new building project is, well, what happens if we don't get the new building? Well, all the money we're saving right now to put into other buildings to not only keep them up and running like, you know, all of our buildings, to responsibly not only fix things, but make them, you know, strongly or durable for the next five years and so on. That money's coming little by little from here. We don't get the new school, all that money and more, and then pretty much all of our resources go back into fixing big ticket items like, you know, windows, roofs, doors, you know, the portables or whatever they're called, you know, those things. So I just wanted to make that, sure the community knew that. I know the community knows that and appreciates that. But this is one real specific example of how the tide would turn financially for us, that those, the Wampatuck and Jenkins and even Gates now, if you're smart, you start fixing things now and in lengthening the duration of that building. That money would be just drained by these two schools. And then those things start to, to break and not be get, be fixed and those types of stuff. So it's a chain reaction. So ultimately, you're gonna pay for it one way or the other.
So if we move on to Jenkins, again, Jenkins is a little bit bigger of a school and so the FTEs are a little bit higher simply by enrollment. If we could, there we go. So again, very similar slide. I tried to keep these very consistent in terms of the look and feel so that people understood them. The FTEs are a little bit higher at Jenkins, it's just a larger school. And you'll notice there, again, commitment to ELL in every building and just as we kind of move people along. So again, I don't have much to add to this other than the consistency from 24 to 25. I think that's an important part of the story. You know, we are absorbing these additional students, we're absorbing any increase in enrollment. It's understood that we can do that with the current, the current FTEs. And when we're dealing with a budget increase of 3.2%, that's what's expected. So, you know, a big part of a budget story when you're dealing with a limited budget is how do you continue to grow in that situation? And I think we're doing that, which is exciting. With Jenkins, if you go to the expenses slide, you'll see, again, the commitment there to the scholarships. And then two lines under that, you'll see a $25,000 line for building administration, new equipment. Again, Jenkins is one of those schools, albeit it's 24 years old, but we need to maintain that. There's needs for classroom supplies, there's needs for jet chairs and desks. These things just simply wear out. And so when I was talking to Mrs. Aldac, I said, you know, we're gonna put money in there, undesignated. I don't have a list of exactly which chairs and tables we're gonna replace, but I think it's the commitment to keeping that building and keeping that building up and running. So we don't get in the situation that we're in with, with the older ones. So you'll see that commitment at both Jenkins and at Wampatuck. Otherwise, things are pretty much the same story. And, and like I mentioned earlier, the one thing that I really enjoyed, especially coming in new, you always wonder about equity among elementary schools. Among the expense lines, the equity is there. The numbers might feel a little different simply because the enrollment is different. So they need more money to accommodate that. But the commitment is there. And I think that, to me, really showed the level of depth and understanding and granularity that the department has put into this. Again, similar to Wampatuck, of course, at Wampatuck, we include, actually, we don't include the ECC, that's a separate slide. So this is Wampatuck without ECC. And then later on, there's a separate slide for the ECC. Again, that's a budgetary move, just to kinda show it as a separate organization because it is supported by tuition funds. But this is, this is the regular Wampatuck situation. And again, consistent from one year to the next. And like I said, we're watching kindergarten enrollment. And here we are, so the Early Childhood Center. So this again is consistent from actuals and proposed, the top column there with the 24s and 25s, didn't make it up to this slide, I apologize for that. I kept the colors consistent, so we're looking at purple, we're looking at 25. So again, same staff next year. I think, you know, right now, where we're at with early childhood, that enrollment is capped. We only have so many students we can accommodate. And so that won't change until the new building. So we have a consistent staff.
I also, again, want to highlight anything that will impact our new school project in this budget. And there's an example right there, an important one, I think, with ECC, looking to be moved to the new building. You know, right now, we have a cap. We're able to, and one of the thoughts behind moving ECC to the new building is to expand that cap, is to be more inclusive to, to provide opportunities for our community members that are obviously reduced rate. So that's why we're doing that.
So similarly with Wampatuck expenses, you'll see a $25,000 building admin, replace equipment line, same with Jenkins, in order to provide that commitment to the schools that do exist and are currently up and running and that we know we're gonna have to maintain. I think that's an important commitment in the budget throughout. And you'll see the same when we get to the high school. Again, there's, there's nothing else really here. And then middle school, there's been a couple of students addition at the middle school, but our enrollment has stayed the same. And so the 92.4 FTEs, again, I've done a few adjustments here and there. 88.5 to 92.4. I think for me, like Mr. Burke had mentioned, FTEs can be counted in different ways. I just needed to figure out a way that I could do it and be consistent with moving forward. And so I've done that. So that 92.4 is what I consider the, the staffing. What does change from year to year is the paraprofessionals, because that changes with the needs of students. And so we may not talk about that, you know, well, this power is transferring from this building to that building. Because we don't wanna necessarily highlight individual student needs going from fifth grade to sixth grade or, or eighth grade to ninth grade. But that certainly happened. And you'll see throughout the notes in your books where I can show you that, you know, a paramite gone from Hattley to the middle school or vice versa or back and forth. So the paraprofessionals move based on the needs of the students. And frankly, any of these little FTE shifts are primarily motivated by that, in terms of what we need for the needs of our students from one year to the next. If you look at Gates for expenses, again, there's a modest increase there. Gates took two pages, so we can go back and forth between the two pages. You'll see a $73,000 increase in Gates. That is primarily driven by the new math curriculum. So the way we fund the new curriculum is through the textbook lines at both Gates and the high school. And so last year, the science curriculum was funded through those two lines of the science curriculum. Next year, those lines will be funded through the math curriculum. So if you look on the second page, you'll see a significant increase in mathematics text, the second line down, you'll see up $184,000, and then further down, a science text, you see down $125,000, and that's how we correct for it. One of the great things here is that that curriculum money is embedded into the budget, so it allows for a curriculum renewal cycle that's baked in. The tough part is figuring out which subject to go for every year, but the money is there. And what that does is it allows for us to commit to a curriculum improvement cycle over years, which is extraordinary. I will tell you that when you talk about, you know, the consistency from one district to the other in my own experience, that everybody does this. This is nice, because what it does is it really allows us to commit to that curriculum improvement, and then the department heads can count on it. They know, hey, you know, this next year's math year, this year was sciences year, well, another year will be another subject, and they can count on that, and they can make their planning important, which is fantastic.
Detective Lieutenant Burke, I know we've heard from our awesome math teams periodically. I'm, I guess this is a request maybe in a future school committee we hear more about. We keep hearing changes to math curriculum, and I see it in the middle school and high school, so it'd be awesome to have a chance to hear more about the exciting work that the staff is doing around that.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bukowski, and I think since we're investing so much money into that program, and we may have done this last year at Science, I think we did.
Yeah.
We will come up with a follow-up meeting with the department and the curriculum to talk a bit. How we'll use this money and how we'll invest it in very specifics, kind of like the other things we talked about with technology and communication. So this will be a nice opportunity to follow up on that and let the community and the committee know exactly where and how we're going to do that. So thank you for that suggestion.
And the only other highlight that I put on the Gates middle school expenses would be, again, the replace equipment line. I funded that at $15,000. Again, because there are opportunities for new tables and chairs, and this sounds very granular, but one of the conversations I had with Mr. Beatty when we were talking about this was, you know, let's make sure that anything we buy that's new matches what's already there. You know, we spent a lot of time picking out the tables and chairs that are there. We want to make sure that what we buy is new, so that it looks new, it looks exciting, it looks like something the students want to do. So that funding is embedded in the budget for him to use for that purpose. As we move on to the high school, again, consistent FTEs, and I know we had a wonderful presentation about the high school program of studies, but all of that new work is being done with the same number of staff. That was made clear when the program of studies was presented, and again, wonderful thing. We do what we have to do to meet the needs of students in any year, any one year to the next. Everything's kind of laid out there. I don't have a whole lot to say about the high school staffing other than what's presented there, but they're working very hard with what they have. I did, for the high school expenses, again, the primary driver, it's over two pages, but the primary driver for the $100,000 increase is the new math curriculum. Math texts is $246,000, replacing what was in science text the year before. So again, our commitment to the new math program as well as a commitment to supplies here at the high school, whether they be chairs and desks and so forth and so on, just to make sure that we're keeping this building the way it should be from one year to the next. There's a significant increase in industrial technology supply for Project Lead the Way. That's a project that we're committed to here at the high school, and so we've been able to put the funding there for that. Otherwise, there isn't any real big, big jumps. I just wanted to make sure the high school could maintain what it needed to from one year to the next.
The new math curriculum is six to 12.
Sorry.
The new math curriculum is for six to 12.
Yes. That's why there are funds involved. Basically, what I did is I received the total number from them of what the new curriculum is going to be, and then based on enrollment, I divided by the number of students and put so much money at the middle school and so much money at the high school. But at the end of the day, like Dr. Burke Kowski suggested earlier, we can move that back and forth depending on how.
It'd be great, kind of, exactly what Dr. Burke Kowski said, just to get deeper into some of that math, because I have more specific questions, not budget-related.
So to get into the more centralized situation here, I think the story on this slide is the additional point three that we talked about with the added district coordinator. And so we talk about special education district salaries. It's very consistent. The district added a third BCBA in this year's budget. I'm sure that was a conversation at this time last year. That's been wonderfully successful, working with our students. And so, again, if you look at this slide as opposed to last year's version of it, it is different only because I just, I wanted to put all these people together in one place. It was just easier for me. It was selfish and personal. That's where I want them. So that was it.
Well, you have to, you're in the weeds with this, so whoever you need organized.
I just needed to find them. So you'll see a couple of jumps around a little bit, but only because I kind of moved them up because there's additional staff. And again, where we do have additions, I do like to point them out. So the point three that $18,000 is to accommodate for that additional point three. And then we look at the next slide for special education district expenses. The primary driver there is in special education contracted services and a little bit of the private school tuition. The tuitions always go up. We try to bake a little bit into that. We're not seeing, like we did last year, that 14% increase. We're not seeing that. That's come back down to a more traditional increase from one year to the next. But again, to provide for, our ability to handle unanticipated special education is critical, and so we need to make sure we have that in there. Otherwise, again, Dr. Bobert isn't with us this morning, but she went through this with a fine-tooth comb as well. And, you know, we said, well, there's going to be some increases in transportation and increases in other areas. We need to see if we can shave some other areas to make that work. So even though there was a $228,000 increase, overall, you can see there, this is pushing and pulling to make that happen. The increase in purchase of services there from $55,000 to $93,000 is simply because we contract out our vision services for those students who use it. We did have somebody on staff apparently last year, and then we changed that to a contracted services situation. So it's just a matter of moving the money from one part of the budget to another.
I think related to what Ms. Randall Lady said earlier, it'll be a great opportunity to have more discussions with Dr. Bobert and her team about sort of what this looks like, because I think a question, I'm 100% supportive of increasing the FTE. I think it would be really helpful to know in, you know, know sort of the state of things right now and sort of what the reason was, and then this time next year, how did that go, right? You said that adding the additional specialist was really effective, so it's good to hear that feedback. So just sort of the building in, because you're either a part of the special ed community sometimes or you're not, and so not everybody is privy to all the great work that they're doing behind the scenes, so just bringing that to the community, I think, would be good.
I just wanted to agree with that. Thank you. And I think part of that presentation, too, we can actually include some of the successes of the new BCBA position, because I think sometimes that gets lost. We ask for these positions. People see it in addition. It's a bump in cost, certainly, but to come back to the detailed rationale and then the success of previous moves really reinforces the what and why, so.
It's great, yeah.
Notes on that, that will certainly be in the future agendas. Thank you.
So again, the list of people who work behind the scenes at central administration. And what I did, again, just to kind of categorize things, is I did put special ed administration with special ed and regular ed administration with regular ed, again, for no other reason than just my own personal convenience. And so if we take, if we take these three FTEs, you know, there's been some movement at central offices, as Mr. Burke had mentioned, you know, we have certain new people there and different contract settlements and different things have gone on. So I tried to make it as clear as possible just to show everybody there. And again, the story here is that we're incorporating the director of supplemental services, albeit that position in many ways will pay for itself, and we've seen that, that position is working on paying for itself, but we're bringing that into the fold now in the budget. It's part of the $51 million, and I think that's the important thing to give to, to show.
Does this work to you?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Yes.
Central administration expenses, I think, you know, there's a very modest increase here. Dr. Dutch, I have to say this and give him a lot of credit for really pulling together these lines in the budget. He worked hard, as I looked at the past history over the last couple of years, truing up these lines, making sure that we have what we need to run the district, all the behind-the-scenes contracted services and everything we need to do. So to be perfectly honest, I really didn't have to change a whole lot. We have a new copier contract. We're in year one of three of the new copier contracts, so there was a modest increase there. We do have our bus communication system. Our bus drivers have phones that they use, and so there was a modest increase. You know, you divide that by 17 buses times a monthly fee. It's just what it is. So I was actually, again, pleasantly surprised at how well-done central administration expenses were, and didn't really feel the need to change them too much, so I was happy about that.
Just to go back to that, you don't have to go back any slides, but I feel bad, but just to add one more thing to your list that you're telling over there. It feels like the friends meeting we had where everything went your way, but it'd be great to get sort of a new, an update, Metco. I know you've been doing very well personally over there and going to conferences and just love to share that with the public and bring on our new director a little up, maybe you're up there on the card.
Yes, and thank you.
Maybe on my calendar.
And this is my job, so I enjoy these things, quite honestly, so. But, you know, and that's why I really appreciate the community, because giving us direction is extremely helpful. So we know, you know, what you want to see and hear, and it helps us prepare. But, yeah, I'm excited actually to share Metco update and all we've been doing with our new director and with Mr. Barnes moving into a new role, but also to, you know, share the vision, and we haven't had that in a while. And I know, and I'll jump to this, too. I know Mr. Adams will be presenting to the school committee on our equity update after the meeting we're at February education. So we will have some full agendas, but I think they're all going to be very substantial, full of substance and great things. We'll add that, certainly. Thank you.
For technology salaries, this was one of those areas in the budget where there was, again, some things that were just put in that particular line, and I left them there more for convenience, but certainly our tech coordinator, our information manager, Mr. DeProst, did a wonderful job with all of the student information that we have to manage for all of our students. In, this is very granular, but in the books, I did show some of the movement from one staff to the next. So you can see here, you know, Ms. Matthews, which originally had Pac Tech, we now have Joshua Heath in that role. And so again, it's zero sum. It's still one FTE. And this is an area where I actually did round up a little bit, because I think it's a 20-hour position, so technically it would be a point five. But we do have our accompanist, Sarah Troxler, and again, just to try to find a place in the budget, I wanted to make sure that everybody was accounted for. We have our tech para, Ms. Egan, and then as Mr. Burke had mentioned earlier, we have our two tech staff, and we wanted to add a third. And so that's why we're going from seven FTEs to eight. And we're certainly committed to providing a little bit more information on that job description and what's going to be involved. I budgeted it, but it's pretty obvious at 105 there, so that we will be able to recruit and maintain, so I'm going to call it that. And then, so technology primarily is expenses. We have a $67,000 increase in our technology expenses. I did, I rolled this up. In your books, you have every detail of every single line in terms of what we're doing here. But basically, this is all of the technology that supports everything that we do. There's a tremendous amount of what I call back-of-the-house wiring when it comes to Wi-Fi infrastructure, making sure all of this works. Switches and routers and hubs that are all embedded in IDF's and MDF's in all different places around the building to make sure that our kids have what we have. We have a one-on-one Chromebook initiative, making sure that our students' Chromebooks stay current and stay awake. We make sure that we can have replacements as needed, replacement technology for everybody. So I kind of rolled this up just to show everything that's into this budget. One particular piece of the budget at Gates, they're looking for replacement iPads at the art program, and you were talking about the art program earlier. A lot of this is coming down to technology and use of technology, so we want to make sure that our kids have what they need and can stay current as well. So again, it's not a huge story there, but it's about technology. With curriculum, again, I rolled it up. The primary, primary reason for the $50,000 increase is the math curriculum. This is another area where the movement from FY23 to FY24 doesn't always line up. Again, these are decisions that people make about where to put things in a curriculum line. I made some decisions about just where I think it's easier to find things in supplies and contracted services and so forth. Professional development that leap there is about the math curriculum and making sure we're supporting everything that's there. I tried not to put any acronyms in curriculum that I didn't spell out, so just for the sake of, for everybody to understand what we're talking about. But I think this really, again, and I'm not going to step out of my lane, but when you talk about the curriculum for a district this size and you talk about the level of benchmark testing and the level of granular detail and assessment and analysis that we are doing with our students, it's extraordinary, and it's all funded, but it's also the work. The money is the secondary. It's the work of the department heads and the teachers that are making this happen, so, under the direction of Mrs. Driscoll. So there's no question about it. It's tight and it's organized. And then, I think this is the last one, regular rent transportation. Again, it's gone up a little bit. We have settled contract with our drivers for next year, so we know where our cost is going to be. Fuel, we went up last year. It was $100,220 from '23 to '24, so I kept that. I did correct for the lease of the buses, $250,000 from out of the joint costs, and then another $54,000 from the money that we raised for parents. I added contracted services a little bit, because we do find that when there are three or four field trips in an afternoon or there are multiple sports events, we can't always cover those, and so we do need to sometimes go out and contract out. We do have a commitment to the annual school. We're taking some of those students as well, so I just wanted to make sure there was money there. And then for supplies, I mean, you know, anytime you're running 17 buses, we need to make sure that we have the supplies to keep the mall running, so. That's it.
Additional questions?
Josh, thank you very much for this. I think that as a district of the committee, we've kind of made it a goal to become more transparent in our budgeting, and we really have evolved quite dramatically, I think, in over the last three years that Dr. Dutch is here. We made great progress. And this, I think this is ultimately what, I think, that what we were really looking for, make things much easier and simplified. Hopefully, those that care to take a look at it will feel the same way. So thank you for that. I said, I just wondered if you could just walk me through, and I hope it's not too complicated, but just for example, like Wampatac, I know that you had mentioned that we're staffing, so, you know, if we have to add an additional section of, say, kindergarten or something, we're prepared to do that. Could you just, would you just mind walking through Wampatac? Because I think that one's, for me, is interesting, and I don't think I knew that they currently had three kindergarten classes currently at Wampatac. I think that maybe my confusion is that maybe there's a retirement in there, so that's probably where I got stumbled.
I believe that they have two right now, but there was embedded in this budget, even in '24, the opportunity for an additional section if we needed one. So we wanted to make sure, again, kindergarten enrollment is volatile from year to year.
Yep.
So I wanted, this year, when Dr. Dutch put the budget together, to make sure there was a position available for kindergarten enrollment if we needed it. And so basically, I kept it there for '25.
Okay.
So unless I'm wrong, because there were two sections currently.
It's two.
There's two. Yes, somebody down in their head, that there. Good, okay.
The record shows she put up.
Okay, I'm two, okay.
And I think that's what Dr. Robert alluded to earlier, where it happens to be happening at Wampatac, but if we get a flux of kids at Jenkins, we could move that there, because typically, we do one of the classes. It's just so unpredictable versus not having it in there and then having to come back and take that salary out of something else and then being out of pay.
I think that ties to the commitment to keep kids in their neighborhood school, too, because in a very, that far away past, we weren't able to necessarily do that, especially have to program some people.
It's also connected to class size as well, you know, especially in kindergarten. We made a commitment, and I know you have given me the directive as a committee, and I'm very proud of the fact that we're keeping our classes on average below 20 in the elementary. So if you don't add that position, yeah, you might get away with it, but for kindergarten to have, you know, 28, 27 kids, that's not acceptable to us, so we want to make sure we'll build that in.
And it's along those lines. I'm sorry if this is complicated, but like, we have four second-grade classrooms currently at Wampatac.
No.
How many others?
Come up.
Sure. And I will know this, so let me explain how this chart is done.
I know exactly. I just, I just was trying to decipher.
So basically, I will admit that there might be one or two mistakes in here in terms of who's assigned to what grade level. I did my best to try and know exactly who was assigned to what. I was more concerned with making sure that the totals were correct. So there might be a couple of things that I didn't catch, and I'll be brutally honest, okay? That somebody might be assigned to second grade here, and in fact, this year, they're doing third grade. This is a constant conversation that I'm having. But this is what I had. And the other thing I tried to do was show the progression from '24 to '24 adjusted. So one of the things in the granular detail that you have, '24 is what was originally budgeted this time last year. '24 adjusted is what you approved on Monday night, which allowed me to bring it to the next level, so that we can true that up. And so you'll see in some of these cases where there was an FTE. And so you'll see in some of these cases where there was an FTE in 24 original and then it zeroed out either because that person retired or resigned or there was a transfer to try and show a progression from 24 original this time last year to 24 adjusted. But I will absolutely admit that this might not be dead accurate in terms of some of the grade levels. I was much more concerned with making sure the total was correct, just being brutally honest.
Yeah, I was, I was actually interested, I, I thought that there were only two kindergartens, I thought somebody would have budgeted for three because and totally I think there's going to be a lot of big kindergarten classes coming up here in Wampatack.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. We, we had budgeted last year for three and then we, when the registration opened, we had like our lowest enrollment ever. So we had to reduce the size, but our kindergarten the year before was three and those were large classes. So those three went to four firsts. So right now we have two Ks, we have four firsts. So those four firsts will become four seconds next year.
Okay.
And our two Ks right now, even though there's only two, they're still high, they're kindergarten, they're 21 right now. So we're going to move those two Ks to three firsts. And then we'll wait and see what kindergarten holds for us. And that registration opens next week on Friday.
So I feel like this is not unique to Wampatack either, it's just the nature of.
Right, it just, it just, it's, it's funny that the year before we had some of our highest numbers ever, right, in kindergarten. And this current year, we have one of somewhere lowest, so.
Great, thank you.
I had a question, and this is mostly because now I'm liaison for our capital planning. And so I just want to make sure, I want to make sure I understand, you know, we get comments often about the facilities maintenance budget and how that should change now that you have. And I remember at the meeting, we talked about now that you have a little bit of history. So I'm just wondering, can you talk to, was it adjusted for future or what does it look like now?
We've, we've left it the same for 250,000 for FY25. However, if, and I don't know if you can go back to the slide with central administration expenses, but you'll notice in 23, we actually spent over $300,000 in that line. So there was a little bit of money left over in 22 that was brought into the summer, but regardless, the total was a little over $300,000. So we are exceed, we exceeded that line in 23 and we can do that like we talked about earlier. We can transfer money from one line to another. In 24, we're trending on spending all of it and certainly we're planning on spending all of it next year. So again, for me, it's a commitment to those fixes and to that extraordinary expenses. But after that meeting, I went right back and took a look and we were over 300,000 in 23, so I was happy to see that.
I'd like to just add to that if I could. So I think what we hadn't mentioned in that capital, because I know there's a request to bump that number up. Obviously, my response to that was not many districts have even have a maintenance line, let alone a quarter million dollars. So raising that is where do you take away? So in a good year, a 4%, 5% increase of a budget, that could be bumped up. And if there are needs, we're prioritizing our buildings, like in example, Dr. Rab gave, for leisure, we actually spent 300, so we did increase it. But we budgeted that. I think the other point to make is that we, it was your question earlier, Dr. Kowski, is that there's also money in our supply items that just aren't for books and pencils and texts. They're also for chairs, tables. So I think we have to make a better case of our capital next year of that and even maybe grab the, capture those amounts and say, well, it's more than 250 really, it's 300. Because we also capture it in our operational budget elsewhere. So I think that's the point we need to make, that we are spending a lot more and those. The example for the community to talk about is something we inherited was all the sinks in the high school for the science labs not working. And the capital committee had a good point in saying, well, why are you coming now with this big expense when one sink at a time could have been fixed? They weren't wrong. But again, we just said that's something we inherit that won't ever happen again under our leadership, that we are fixing every sink as they break now. In fact, we're putting in, in the example here, if that were to happen again, if one or two sinks were breaking in the science lab and we looked around and all of them were going to break in the next year or two, we'd replace them all on our dime.
Yeah.
So I think the new vision and how we're doing things and committing that money ahead of time, it's hopefully a good response you can have for capital. And then when we come there too, we'll reinforce that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm glad you mentioned that, Superintendent Burke, because the things that I was writing down also, I mean, I have questions, but I feel like there's also a story here that you are being good stewards of the town's money. And I think unfortunately, sometimes that's not conveyed enough. And I just wrote down, you've, you've absorbed growth in enrollment. You have this, this third, it'll be a third year of supplemental services position that's bringing in grant money and funding themselves. You've embedded scholarships for students who can't afford the field trips. There's a maintenance, right, the maintenance of supplies. You've cut costs, like the teachers, you showed how the teachers went through and said, oh, we actually don't have this expense anymore, so we're going to move that. I don't think in governmental budgeting, that does not happen very often, right? And the other thing I love that you said, Dr. Rab, and I don't think this should be understated, is we are a district that embeds curriculum improvement costs in the budget. And you said that's not, so that's a huge expense. And I think that's so wonderful that we have that cycle and staff will have the opportunity. So I think, you know, this is a great presentation and I think there's an opportunity to also tell that part of the story though, to say, these are the things we're like, we're nailing, right? We're doing well. The last comment and then I'll be quiet is, we've done, we've had so much activity in that supplemental services director role. I think it'd be great to hear more from that person or to have somebody come and talk about, because I'm, I'm, I take notes about the grants we're winning and the work we're doing. And I, I just would love to have a chance to highlight that more because it's not insignificant amount of money that we're bringing to the district. Not me, you and your team are bringing to the district. And so just giving us a sense of how those decisions are made, what that requires, what it's being used for, right, what are the opportunities, so just bring that.
Thank you for all that too, I just took some great notes on, just because we do have to include a lot of that Monday as part of, and then with subsequent. So this is kind of like, I referred the sports analogy to opening day, game day. So I think traditionally what we found is we found little corrections we can make in the, in here. So before we bring this Monday, we'll make some edits, some small change there, but also the input you're providing for the narrative. So I think that's extremely important. And then moving forward, simultaneously letting the community and community know on the great things are happening, but also educating them on. You know, because I don't do it justice to say we made $400,000, well, that catches people's eyes. It would even get, make a stronger argument, have, you know, Ms. Driscoll up here and Ms. Ward up here actually sharing the great things that that money does for our staff and for our kids. So I've added all that to our list and I think we can, you know, in subsequent meetings start planning that out, so thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah. We just, I ask you.
I was just curious on that same point about the 250,000 for the like capital improvements and fixing things. It sounds like you already have a sense of what that would be spent on next year. I, I, I think, but I'm not sure, so I might be wrong about that, that's part one. And I guess part two is just to the point of the narrative and how important it is to, you know, have our eye on those, on the maintenance and improvements. It would be perhaps useful to know what a couple of those things are, assuming they're, you know, assuming we do know.
I can certainly answer that, thank you so much for asking. And maybe I'll invite Mr. Cataldo up to the table just in case I flub up some of this. But one or two of the things that we've been talking about, so that money, we do have a sense of what we want to spend it on in some areas. And in other areas, it's there just in case. So most recently, we had an issue at Wampatack where, you know, they lost heat temporarily for a couple of hours and we had a certain valve or a part of the boiler system break and we needed to fix that. And in other situations, that would have been a real crisis. You know, we would have had to come up with that money, we would have been finding that money, we would have been transferring. Because we have that money embedded, we can make those fixes immediately and we can forestall a bigger issue. Because if you ignore something like that, then it just becomes more and more of an issue down the road. So having the money primarily is for unanticipated issues. You know, God forbid, we have, you know, these are older buildings and, you know, even in this building, everything is linked up and we have different things that break. And if something breaks, I want to be able to not only make the initial fix, but Mr. Cataldo will tell you, I always ask, well, what's the next step? What, what would make this better? You know, not just the fix, okay, stop the leak, I'm good, but what can we do to make this better? What can we do to take the next step? There are little things that we can do to make sure that we stay on top of the maintenance without it becoming a big deal. Does a gym floor need to be refinished? Do, do we need to buy some new padding for something? You know, those are the kinds of things that can cause a crisis in other districts, that here, because we have that money, we keep things safe for everybody. Not to put you on the spot, but maybe you could find a point on something.
Yeah, it's important to keep generators working, heating and air conditioning ventilation running, just general day-to-day operational maintenance, electrical, plumbing, heating is going to work. It's just, and stuff breaks and you can't tell what's going to break, when it's going to break. You know, motors and units that, you know, heat the building break, leaks happen all the time, it's just a day-to-day operational situation.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was a combination.
Perfect, thank you. I think that's just helpful to kind of know and the point about the being prepared for unanticipated emergencies definitely makes sense. And I feel like that's like important to, to say and for people to know. And I just had one other question on an unrelated topic, if that's okay, can I go, Nicole?
Go for it.
I was just curious if someone could describe like the process through which teachers get to say what they need. I, assuming that that happens at the, at each school level, but I just want to kind of, just kind of better understand how that works since teachers are the ones who might be most likely to say, hey, you know what, we really need X thing. And I know sometimes teachers, maybe not so much in our district, but certainly in other districts, you know, can write little grants and things for small things that they need. But I was just kind of curious how teacher voice comes into the budgeting process.
Oh, thank you very much for that. And I didn't really get too much into how we create the budget at the beginning of this. And the principals and department heads work directly with their teachers. And so at the elementary level, they're going to go primarily through their department heads or through the STEM or humanities curriculum director to express their needs. And then the principals meet with me and I make the understanding that they've met with the teachers. They've also met with their site-based councils in order to get input on the budget as well. At the secondary level, not only are the principals involved, but the department heads work closely with the teachers and will convene the teachers in different groups to make sure that they have what they need. So I rely on that to get the needs of the teachers heard throughout the whole process.
Do you have a principal and or department chair that would volunteer to come up just to get some more specific or detail on how it actually looks in the, in the department?
Sure.
I'm being put on the spot.
I think a good example at the elementary level was the need for instrument repair. That came directly from the teachers. At the secondary level, staying with music, we had a need for just trying to get in front of purchasing school instruments, which are quite expensive. And if we can start chipping away at it and have a dependable budget, then, you know, that'll go a long way in that direction. In terms of art, the iPad updates at the middle school is an example of a need that was brought to my attention. So there's a few samples.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, questions or anything?
I guess it wouldn't be a budget workshop without me mentioning something about the importance of the financial forecast.
Yeah, oh, yes. Would have been bad luck.
I just want to reiterate the importance as Superintendent Burke had mentioned, really the ability for us to work collaboratively with the town. I think we've met five, twenty-five times, the first one maybe in September, October. It's really just an estimate of what the town and the schools think the expected revenue would be relative to that, how much we would receive, you know, the 66 and two-thirds. I think that we've developed a great relationship and it's been fantastic and it really does take away a lot of that push-pull, like we need 45 million, so we're going to go to the town and try to validate why we need it. In this case, it's kind of like, this is your portion. But the important pieces is what are the expected revenues from which that amount is derived? Situate's been very fortunate, especially over the last four fiscal years. Where one of our big numbers that allows for our district to support our students and our staff is our new growth number. The new growth is basically new homes, new construction or improvements to existing homes. Those homes get reevaluated and the taxes get increased. As a result, the schools get two-thirds of every new dollar. And as everyone knows, real estate everywhere, specifically even in Situate, it's really been a boom. My expectation, not to put a damper on this, but we can most likely expect that new growth number is not going to continue as it has in the past. And that's going to have an impact on everyone's budget, not just Situate, not the town, not just the schools, but I think everywhere. And I think it's something just important in the back of our heads that we've been very responsible, we've really spent every dollar as carefully as, as we could be asked. But just for example, the new growth number in 23 was 2.4 million dollars. We're budgeting $800,000 as a new growth number. That's substantial. The way that we have to budget, we have to estimate what we think the new growth number is going to be. So we're proposing, as the committee, the financial forecast committee is estimating 800,000. When the actual number comes in, it's a real number that gets certified by the state, that gets added to our tax base, but not until the following year. So I think 800 is probably a little bit low in reality, but I think that 800 is the new number going forward in '26 and '27. That's a significant change from 2.4 million that we received in 2023. So I just want to set that expectation that, and we're not going to be alone, but in future budgets, it's not going to be as simple as what we've been able, we've added two point, remind me, 2.3, 2.3 positions. That's just amazing that we have the ability to do that. But I'm not sure we're going to be having these discussions in the following years, I just want to kind of set that. But that we've done an amazing job, I think that we will continue to do that. But that this collaboration with the town and the anticipated, you know, financial shortfalls across the country are probably going to be felt in the coming years. So I just, it's not something negative and stuff, just kind of realistic of what we're going to be experiencing in the coming years. And again, I've always said, and my point was that financial forecast is probably the most important committee of anything here. I just wanted to say that once again and that for anyone, it's a public meeting. And again, the meetings generally start September-ish and depending upon when numbers get updated roughly monthly. And that's important, some, something to keep an eye on as we progress. And we'll probably have another meeting, I don't know, at the end of February, I'm guessing, just to revisit our current forecast. But I guess I want to say that and thank you, Superintendent Burke and Dr. Ab, for putting this all together. And then I pounded you guys and you guys have to go to all those folks behind you, I appreciate that. And we'll look forward to the reviewing this once again at our meeting.
Question, Peter, with the 800,000, that is the estimate and then the future number becomes more concrete, but it's not adjusted on our end. We are, we are always working with that initial estimate and we get that two-thirds split from that.
Yeah, so in the current year's budget, we are working with the 800,000.
Yeah.
Okay? But in, I think the time, I forget the timing, but I want to say it's August, September, sometime around that, the state actually certifies the real number. So when the real number gets certified, it gets added to the tax base of the town. So we then will receive.
We get a difference.
We'll then receive the two-thirds of the, of the certified number, but it's not till the following year.
Yeah, right.
So we're not really gaining that much, it's really that.
Doesn't help us with budgeting.
Doesn't help us with budgeting in the current year.
Correct, yeah.
The real challenge is what is our anticipated new growth? And if we can get, be real accurate on that number, it makes our budgeting easier. But if we overestimate, if we anticipate we're going to get a million and a half and we only get a million, we're going to be way, we're going to have way overspent. So we budget very conservatively to make sure that we can at least meet that number.
Yeah.
I could make one comment, Madam Chair, I, thank you for saying that, Peter, I really appreciate that. The only thing I would say is that, that additional revenue, when it does come in, helps us with capital planning too down the road. So, you know, that money can get put into the capital budget, which helps everything we've talked about earlier. So it all comes back to us one way or the other.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it can be underscored enough how smart and just good for the entire town, the way that Situate does the budgeting, the split. And having worked in districts where that is not the case, it is stress, anxiety, tension in, right in the actual buildings, all the way into elementary schools about, oh my goodness, are we going to get this budget approved? Is it going to be the 1%? We're talking about small dollars at the end of the day, but huge impact to everybody's ability to function in their positions day by day, worrying about if we're going to be able to fund. And in some districts, that literally comes down to, you know, jobs and people, and so it's very stressful. And so I very much appreciate living in a town that values teachers and education and children and, you know, just really thankful to have this be our process. And we'll always advocate. And, you know, just really thankful to have this be our process, and will always advocate for that to continue indefinitely. It's really, really quite, quite different in other places, so much appreciative.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Gates, for that. I think it's very educational, very well said. Exactly how things work. Superintendent Leeny for just kind of following on, and I agree with that, being in many districts in my, in my 30-year career. You know, I've got people, superintendents reaching out to me like, how do you do it in Situate? So maybe we could do some workshops for folks, because I really believe in watching, you know, my own town go, you know, go through their conversations. There's 30 people in a room, and it's back and forth, and it gets contentious, and it's just not set up for success like that. So I think doing it this way is helpful. But also, I think what Mr. Gates said was very important, that we knew, for example, three years ago, we knew that growth was going to come down, and eventually the five would become a four, would become a three. We were already anticipating that. That's why we always have the enrollment numbers up there, we always pay attention to our staffing. We're very, very careful on all of that, so that we're already thinking two steps ahead in anticipating worst-case scenarios. So where, I want folks to know, with some of that gloomy news, that that growth is not always going to be there, we understand and, and are planning for that already, and are fully confident we will be able to continue to offer great services for our kids by thinking ahead and being smart about it, making choices now that will impact, you know, whenever we make this budget, we're thinking two years out. Can we, for example, keep that position, so that we'll never be in a position where we have to make cuts of, of staffing that impacts kids? So I think we're very confident that we can continue to do that, even with some lower budgets upcoming our way, because we're prepared.
It really does, too, go back to Smart East, which is the S R funds, too, and you think about COVID, and not just the new growth, being really mindful and aware and on top of that, that chain. It's, it's very comprehensive, so we appreciate Superintendent Burkehead, Dr. Rab, just all of your efforts, the entire team here. Barbara Chairs, thanks for joining us on Saturday morning, not as cold as last year. But we appreciate all that you all do, and for us and our children, every day. Anyone have anything they want to add as we wrap up? Any of our virtual school committee members? All right. Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 10:56.
All right, our roll call vote, Gates.
Yes.
Or Kowski.
Yes.
Benwick.
Yes.
Liv Lam.
Yes.
And Leeny, yes. All right.